Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. The Duff County Board of Commissioners work session agenda. Today's Thursday, April 2, 2020. Let me start out by thanking the board and everyone that's here for observing the six-foot separation as we worked diligently to try to stop the spread of the COVID-19 that we're all having to deal with. We'll start out with some unfinished business. First up, we have a discussion of impact fees that was moved forward from the March 19, 2020 work session for additional discussion. Jamison, who provided some additional information to each one of you after our last meeting. And I'll remind the board that any action that we would eventually decide to take in reference to impact fees would require a public hearing, which we are obviously not doing at this time. We have a 60-day moratorium on that, so I'll open that up to the board for discussion for anyone who would like to speak.
Chairman, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
I think this time around now, we showed a 75% increase, I think, with commercial collections when we lifted or lifted that part of it.
Lowered it.
Lowered it. And I think this time right now, we'd be sending a message, basically, we'd be kicking them in the teeth, telling them that they gotta come back, businesses are closing, they're laying off employees, and if somebody's looking for a new place to come, I don't think we need to increase the impact fees right now. I think we need to look at it further, future days maybe, but right now, I think it's a bad message sent to them. I mean, I think the residential showed what Jamison gave us, a steady line, that they're still coming. I mean, but commercial is what we're gonna be in the near future, and we're gonna need more of it if we're gonna come out of this thing. But I think right now at this time, I think we need to table it and postpone.
Any other discussion?
Okay, I agree with you. This is not the right time to lower. We shouldn't, in my opinion, lower them upfront. We should've taken everything we could've gotten so we would have money now to do some improvements, which evidently we're not going to have. So I could not support lowering them now because this is not the time.
Are you saying lowering them or raising them?
Raising them. I'm sorry.
This whole thing has been strange to me because I don't understand why we lowered them when times were good. I wanted us to get that money in there. And so now, we're certainly not gonna raise them when times are bad. This whole inversion thing has confused me from the beginning. And I guess Jamison wrote this, but it's very upsetting to me. It's page five in this. It is important to note, the original adopted impact fee schedule was designed at 100% collected across the board. It can only be assumed that lowering the fee would cause the county to come up with those funds in other places. And that is true, and we're gonna have a tough time with other places now. So I just, I regret that they were lowered because, as I said, when we had that vote, you need to make hay while the sun shines. And now, it's got cloudy. So I think we missed a good opportunity.
I totally agree with that. And we got a letter from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, and this sentence caught my attention. It says, "Development impact fees will help you finance the infrastructure necessary to maintain and improve your local quality of life." So that really stuck home with me.
Well, I think at the time, when Jamison showed us that before we lowered them, we didn't have any permits coming in. We didn't have any, the stuff that was already being built before impact fees were up and then, and we didn't have anything coming in new until we lowered them. And once we lowered it, we got some businesses coming in. But when they were up to highs it were, the stuff we had being built at the time was before the impact fees were put in.
I didn't understand it like that. I truly, so we had two different opinions, but I still think when times are good, they should've been kept high. And certainly, I don't wanna adjust anything now, but to me, I just think like that inversion thing has just confused me because I wanted us to keep them high when times were good. And now, I mean, they're, I don't think we need to touch anything now, but it's just been confusing to me the whole time. But evidently, we saw it different, you know, from each other. So I get what you're saying.
Yeah, we didn't have anything new coming in.
Yeah, so impact fees is one tool that we have in the big toolbox, in my opinion. Impact fees, this board put those in place after a study, and the study that other communities have done for impact fees sets what's called a high water mark. That's the most that you can legally set them at. That's the 100%. That doesn't mean that it's responsible to implement them at 100%, because the reality is, is if we, to Tim's point, you set them at 100%, you might turn away the type of businesses that we are actively trying to recruit. We're actively trying to diversify our economic base beyond retail and service base, that we, as a board, have also that we want to do to light industrial, to medical. We have excellent opportunity to make hay, as you say, with the hospitals going into 400. Lunkin County doesn't have any impact fees. So we have to look at it at a macro level, not at a micro level, that if it had been 100%, we would've gotten X amount more. That's not a definitive statement because those people might not ever come, and we might not get anything. So in order for us to be responsible and be able to continue to grow in a smart way and to get economic development that's diversified, as we also want, we have, we're in a competition with our neighbors to the south. We basically put ourselves in line to our neighbors to the south. We also put ourselves higher than our neighbors to the north. So we're still much higher than our neighbors to the north, but this is a tool that we have in the toolbox in order to help offset development costs. This board did put them in place. This board lowered just the commercial, the main two that affect commercial. Residential is still at 100%. So the things that actually impact your service cost, which this board all knows, is residential. Every house you have actually costs you in service capital. A business, you bring a business in, you're hiring people, you're creating jobs, you're creating wages that turn around and drive your economic basically throughout your whole community. And so, you know, we can't say in one mouth that we wanna recruit certain types of businesses and the other say that we wanna be uncompetitive when it comes to our fees and structures that's gonna turn those same businesses away or make them jump over. I saw a good analogy the other day, is if you have a light industrial plant that pays higher wages than what we have, you know, in some of our other places, what if they go to Lunkin County? Those workers are still driving through, they're still causing an impact to the services that we, the sheriff still has to manage 400 with, you know, with traffic and things like that. So it's still a service we have. But if they go to Lunkin County because we're uncompetitive, because we've priced our stuff out of the market, we get nothing out of that. And so I think getting something at a responsible level, you talk to, you know, people in the economic industry, and you talk to experts, I'm not an expert in economic development, but I lean on those people that are. And I think that we've set them at an area that makes us competitive. We still have collected a tremendous amount of funds, but it's one tool we have in the toolbox. It's not meant to be the whole one-stop shop for everything. So I would agree, it's not the right time at all to adjust them. Businesses right now are struggling, and, you know, if we're gonna look at it again, I was the one that actually made the idea of let's look at it on a continuous basis, you know, when we did lower it. So I'm all for keeping a pulse on what's going on, and let's see in what our ebb and flow is in development and making sure that they are in the right manner, but right now is not the right time to do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Question for Jack.
Go ahead.
Now, one thing we did to do to increase some of that funds on building is on our permits and license fees, the permit fees. Do you have a number, and I don't wanna put you on the spot and ask for you now, but what if they went up since we increased those fees? Roughly, how much money we brought in?
How much money? I can get you those numbers, absolutely, as I don't have the numbers in front of me, as you stated, but they have obviously went up, you know, the percentage that we've been up, absolutely.
And I think that kinda offset some of the impact fees. The permits and the license fees have been up, and that's kind of putting that money back in there that when we lowered the impact fees. We brought a little bit in, plus they had to pay more for permits, too.
Other discussion. I'll give you some statistics that I had drawn from 911. I spoke to Alicia the other day. Emergency services, total service requests for the past six months was 2,088 calls. 434 of those calls went to a commercial business. 1,654 of those calls went to a residence. So that was a 79.2 to 24.8% difference. The sheriff's office, total service request was 6,123. 1,983 of those went to a commercial business. 4,140 of those went to a residence, which is a 67.6 to 32.4% split. Another thing I'll say in reference to our businesses and what our businesses do for us, as you well know, we have a local option sales tax and a special purpose local option sales tax, and we are asking our citizens for a transportation special local option sales tax. And Vicki can verify this. Last year, we generated about $8 million off each one of those pennies that the goods and services that are sold through those businesses are generating $16 million of revenue for us to use. So having a very good business sector is important. As Mr. Gaines has stated, our goal obviously has been to diversify and continue to do that. And so hopefully, I think it's important that we have the, every ability that we can to draw that kind of business that also can. Any other discussion?
Chairman, what's that? One penny related to the millions?
5.31 million.
Sir, every penny.
Every penny. Okay. Any other discussion on that? Obviously, it's not something we can move forward now because we wouldn't have, we don't have the ability to have a public hearing on that either at the moment. Moving on to new business. Presentation of updated Extension Office Memorandum of Understanding, Extension Coordinator Clark Calister. Clark, come on up.
Come on. Stand where I am. Right. Thank you all. Come to you with the updated memorandum of understanding with the University Board, and you've worked to understand. Basically, what this is, is just our cooperative agreement to work together, cooperatively. And it's, you know, I don't necessarily understand all the updates. This document used to be a two-page, it's now a five-plus page. You know, it seems to do a lot more words. Basically, the intent of this, or basically the bottom line, nothing really, I asked it very much, more or anything less. This is sort of just the document that has kind of a relationship.
That's not the term we need to look at it, though.
The attorneys, yeah, the attorneys have looked at it, and then I guess that firm has looked at several others, and the legal base kind of put it all this out around the same time, so all the other counties are kind of at the same time.
Questions for Clark?
Was the raise included in this? I know we can't give you one now because we don't have any money, but I just wondered when the last time this physician got a raise. Does anybody on staff know?
Are you talking about him?
Him.
And Margie?
I'm talking about just him.
For me, it was, it was a COLA maybe two years ago.
COLA, two years ago?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know that that necessarily addresses it in this, it just is.
No, I didn't see. I looked for that, and I did not see anything, but I would like to ask, I know we can't now because we're gonna be probably taking away instead of giving, but two years and just a COLA because, you know, when we did our salary study, and I'm sure your physician probably wasn't included in that salary study, but we, you know.
Is Margie, is Margie in that salary?
No, just Samantha Graves.
Okay, I knew there was one Samantha, okay.
Your state, if you remember correctly.
He's a state employee.
Yeah, cooperative, it's a state.
Uh-huh. He gets a settlement.
Combination for the county and state.
We are, we're prepared for the relationship we have to soon be able to work.
I have another question for you. Is there a deadline for when this needs to be approved?
The only thing they told us is try to get it in by June.
Gotcha. You can handle that?
I can tell you how much I appreciate your office.
Thank you.
It is a very important office. I'm afraid sometimes it's not used as much as you should. I'm not in your shoes. You know, you made me run to death, but I appreciate your being there because never asked you a question that you couldn't answer, and I mean quickly, so I'm glad we got an office.
Yeah, we're glad to be here and glad to serve the citizens like we do.
How often do you go to Lunkin?
Now, not much because they're technically close to the public right now.
Oh, okay.
But usually, it's hard to say, but a normal week, but two days a week.
Okay.
How many camps are y'all, I know they're off right now since COVID's out, but y'all took out the Rock Eagle?
Yeah, so normally, we do. That's the situation of the year now, and they might not even have it this year.
And Los Angeles, y'all go down to?
Yeah, mostly, but there's Rock Eagle, there's, there's one in Tidai, I checked open, and there's one in, what's it called, Forts, and I guess it's sort of just out of there.
How many kids are in the foster care box?
So, yes, we've got, we've got all high school programs, we've got all our community supports, too, so I don't know, the total number offhand, but then Samantha goes to every single fourth of the grade class, too, and so our reach is broad.
I have a question from a homeschool student parent. Do they get involved in forties?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks.
Especially now, a lot of stuff's kind of switched online, so, yeah, everybody's loving it, but, yeah, once everything gets back in the hole, we do.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Clark. Next up, we have presentation of resolution related to school district issuance of bonds. County Attorney.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Last year, the school district passed East Loss.
My, towards you.
Can you hear me? I was loud enough?
I could hear you anyway.
That's right. I'm loud enough. County School District was successful in passing East Loss last year, voted through, and included a general obligation bond, in order for them to cover that as they're required to do, they're asking to include, through their bond council, put this together, a tax levy resolution so that appropriate funds can be collected and set aside in order to cover whatever expenses may not be covered by the sales tax that's covered by, it's a safety net, and as part of the process for related bonds that they issued. I think an updated finalized form tax levy resolution was circulated. You should have that for free.
What was the question?
He says we want to discuss one of these in top row one.
The updated one should have the chart filled out completely.
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, there's some, I thought maybe they skipped payments. Oh, boy, that's kind of long in my life. Okay.
Other question for Calister.
Is this time sensitive, or is it, are we moving this to six o'clock?
Do they have a timeframe they need it by?
Not that I've heard, I take it with progress on its own course.
Okay. Other question. Thanks, sir.
They did want it timed, too?
I believe so, yes.
They did? Okay.
I was not aware of that.
So y'all are moving it to six o'clock?
Moved that to three, did it?
That is right, I remember. They were stuck until they did say that.
Okay, so, you give them, move that, okay, we'll move that to six o'clock.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next up, we have discussion of a proposed emergency order, the chair and board of commissioners to implement local emergency measures related to restaurants and personal contact business establishment. As you're well aware, as we go through this COVID-19, it's been recommended highly that people stay separated, as we are doing here today. Also, the governor is coming out with an executive order at some point in time today that shelters in place. Not sure if you're familiar with exactly what that's going to say, but in what you're looking at today, we're talking about closing, the in-dining of restaurants, we're talking about closing all of the businesses that are personal touch, hair salons, tattoo parlors, gyms, a lot of things that have the opportunity to spread coronavirus. So I'd had a conversation with Dr. Anderson, you all know Dr. Anderson. Dr. Anderson is the head of our local health board, as well as a local physician here as well, and he concurred that it was time for us to do this. And so I'm gonna give Dr. Anderson a couple minutes, if he'd like to say something in reference to what he's been saying. Just the other day.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I went down to Home Depot and got a six-foot pole for my office to use so that we're not debating how far apart the chairs were. So everyone is taking this very seriously. This virus spreads from person to person. It's not the door handles that's the culprit, it's not the elevator button. Those are contributors, but they're very, very minor because somebody had to put the virus there by coughing or touching, you know, and doing that. And so the more that we have this separation and not touch, the quicker that we will be able to get rid of this virus. It doesn't replicate by itself, so if it's on the surface, it's not gonna grow and get bigger or get more, it's gonna be it. It'll either die or it will be able to infect a host. So this is why it's so important. It's more important at this point to stay three steps ahead of what's going on. If we wait until we get a certain number of cases or a certain number of deaths and then do socialization, get away from personal touch, well, it's kind of like too late. It's like if, you know, the horse is stolen from the barn, do you really need a lock? So, and you're gonna have to kind of look at that. So personal touch, I mean, how much more can you get from, you know, getting a tattoo, getting your nails done, getting, you know, your hair done? When I heard that, the first thing I did was look in the mirror and it's like, do I need to brush their hair? You know, and I would tell you, my life is not as happy as any one of you are that these salons are gonna be, you know, closed now and do that. So I think they'll be on the forefront when all this get listed. But the important thing is to keep it out of the county, to keep it controlled. We already have more than what we could deal with, we're trying to get a handle on that. We had three confirmed cases of COVID in the county before the first one was positive for a citizen of this county so that our number would show up on public health. But these three that are tested work into this area, so we're being exposed to them without knowing it and having a false sense of security with my back. I didn't realize that, my turn to the left, you do that, so, okay. Thank you. So that's just another way of, this is here way before we knew it was here. So to come and to do this and to give us how many days this is gonna be gives us that much chance for the virus to die and to not spread. You know, this socialization, this six feet apart, all of this is good, you're doing the right thing. I had to go through the questionnaire, you know, downstairs like everybody else, and we just need to be proactive. And we just can't afford to lose one more person in this county. We can't afford to have more people get sick with this and have the risk of dying in front of it. The hospital in, you know, in Coming just received another shipment of 15 ventilators, which is good, but it's also bad news because that means they have a thought that they're going to need it. The COVID people are not the only ones to put the demand on ventilators. There's plenty of other patients who have chronic lung disease or some other head traumas, other things that require ventilators, so it's not COVID, it's not, they're not the only ones putting the demand on this product. So that's another reason we just need to hunker down and go from there. Any questions for that?
I've got, in your opinion, is a tanning salon very different from the restaurants and barber shops and all this? Is it very different because we got an appeal that they want to keep a tanning salon open, and also, we got an email from somebody wanting to keep a gym open? So in your opinion, are gyms and tanning salons different from these other places that we're going to close?
My opinion is no. Anytime where you're having body contact with another body contact that's been there, it's the risk, even though I'm sure they wipe it down and stop. There's so many other things that you come in contact with, the chair you sit in, the room, the tanning booth itself, you know, your hands are, it would be everywhere, so it's almost impossible. The whole point of all this is to be super aggressive in stopping this thing.
Thank you.
So I would say no to the tanning booths, to those, anywhere people have to leave their homes to go to to get a service that's not essential to their health or life.
Thank you.
Miss Ma.
Any other questions for Dr. Anderson? Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming to explain that. I'll just kind of run over what we're looking at here.
Are you gonna read this still?
I'll read the whole thing tonight.
Oh, okay.
Six o'clock. I'm just gonna kind of go over what we're closing right now. All restaurants, food courts, brew pubs, and other eating establishments shall close to the public excepted by takeout, delivery, drive-through, or curbside service. Dining services are prohibited, and all indoor, outdoor, patio dining areas shall be closed to the public. Cafeterias and hospitals, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, or similar facilities shall not be subject to these restrictions. Wine breweries shall close to the public excepted by the retail packaging sales of wine and other beverages to be consumed off premises. Home premises tasting and or consumption is prohibited. All establishments providing body care service which require physical contact between the provider and the client, including but not limited to barbering, hair design, cosmetology, aesthetics, massage therapy, tattooing, body wax, and tanning salons, or nail care shall be closed to the public. This paragraph shall not restrict any services performed by or under the direct supervision of a licensed medical doctor, nurse, physician's assistant, dentist, dental assistant, physical therapist, chiropractor, or other healthcare profession. All business licensed managed to sell alcoholic beverages for consumption such as bars, taverns, nightclubs, and similar establishments, and all indoor recreational facilities, including but not limited to gyms, health studios, health clubs, yoga, fairs, spin, or other fitness centers, spas, salons, indoor amusement facilities, arcades, bowling alleys, pool halls, movie theaters, playhouses, and live performance venues shall be closed to the public. All other retail, commercial, or industrial establishments will be permitted to remain open subject to the following restrictions: Reasonable steps are taken to ensure that customers, employees, and other persons on the premises shall generally not be within six feet of each other for longer than brief periods, and employees are not suffered or permitted to work if they are exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19 or residing with one another who is exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19. All employers and businesses that remain open are encouraged to do the maximum extent possible to provide employees with the means, authorization, and equipment to perform their job functions remotely by teleworking or other similar means. The governor's executive order, which we have here, was the one that was done on 3/23. We're all aware that we're going to get another executive order that we will conclude in this that requires people to shelter in place. Not familiar with all that's going to be in that? Nobody is at the moment, but when we get that, and hopefully, we will have that by our six o'clock meeting, which I want to move this to for a vote, we'll be able to do that. And that order will be incorporated herein by this reference such that all persons ordered by the Department of Public Health to isolate, quarantine, or shelter in place within their homes or place of residence shall comply with such executive order or administrative order homes or place of residence shall comply with such executive order or administrative order in accordance with the Governor's executive order. And then pursuant to OCGA 383-4 and Code Section 18-4, the Dawson County Sheriff's Office has authorized the force to orders, rules, and regulations implemented by the Chair and Board of Commissioners during declared emergency. And then it goes on to tell you that they could get a fine or 60 days of imprisonment. That would be after they went to magistrate court of course for that. And I will tell you that I had a conversation with Sheriff Johnson right before we came into this meeting, and he has started to see already an increase, and I'm going to let him explain this, or Joey who's here with him as well, increase in, you know, violence and different things with crimes and stuff, because people are together. So, he's kind of tied up with that. He wanted to add, if we didn't care, our Marshals Office to help with this enforcement. And I told him that obviously through our planning department, we would be sending out whatever we approved to all these businesses, and obviously we do have some ability to control them because we control their business life. So, if they don't want to do what they're supposed to do, then we have the ability to do that. But Sheriff and Joey, whichever one of y'all wants to come up and kind of explain the increase and some of the things that the sheriff is seeing or both of them, whichever one you want to.
I'm sure the sheriff. You heard the number of calls from talking with the sheriff, some of those numbers that the chairman gave you may just be within the last few weeks. There may be a thousand more calls come in just because of the circumstances. The sheriff will talk to you about the enforcement. I would just ask y'all to pause on this, do we get the Governor's new order as the chairman has just mentioned about the sheltering in place? I only make that request because under the emergency management act, there is a lot of authority granted to the governor, and I don't know what's going to be in that order, and I don't want to put the sheriff's department, our enforcement people, have confusion out in the community about what can be enforced. If your ordinance conflicts by, as you just preempted, to the extent it conflicts with whatever the governor's going to do, which we all expected y'all would have by now, we thought we had it by now, and so we'd be able to compare with the ordinance and say, okay, here's where there's a conflict, so let's address this ordinance. But if you approve the ordinance, and then that order comes out, you're going to have both there. I recognize, y'all understand, that the Governor's order will preempt it, but I'm just, I fear from the guys on the ground trying to enforce this, there's going to be confusion about which one to control. All I understood from the Governor's office was that we're trying to implement an order that would have statewide application because there was so much confusion from community to community. As a sad report said, if the line was closed, my Chastis Golf Course started tomorrow. Thank God y'all didn't go after the golf courses. But it's that kind of thing that has caused some confusion, and I just, the deputies are going to be on the ground trying to enforce this, and we just don't know what's going to be there. And we briefly talked with the chairman before we started. To the extent there is no conflict, obviously, the county exercises that control, but I just don't know where that conflict is going to be. And under the emergency management act, and I guess Chairman, you act as the executive officer because you have a policy of the emergency management director, and that's part of the implementation. Okay. But those were our only concerns, and I didn't know if the sheriff had comments about specific enforcement issues with which he was concerned. Thank you all.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Board. Again, I can rehash what Mr. Holmes said. We are already seeing an increase in domestic violence cases, we're seeing an increase in domestic cases in period, and a lot of that has to do with children. We're starting to see a lot of parent issues with their children. So, our guy should be, you know, we're not optimal staff as well as I would like to be, so my biggest concern is that obviously since it would be an ordinance violation, we could use the Marshal's help, especially during the business regulations. We're already seeing the calls, I'm already getting calls, members of the office are already getting calls, there's people getting up here, what can we do? There's people, one of the incidents was a golf course. So, we're seeing that, but that would be my request to use that we can include them in the enforcement part of it. Obviously, we are here on nights and weekends and things of that nature, but obviously we want to see compliance over enforcement any day of week, but hopefully the Marshals Office will assist us with doing that as well.
If I got any questions for the sheriff?
I do. Is there, since the schools are out, have you been able to reallocate your SRO officers to help patrol or maybe function in some of these roles that are different?
A little bit right now. We still have some school functions going on, and they are assisting with the beating, some different things like that, but we are able to use them. We're actually able to use somewhat of our court services staff too in that capacity.
So, you have shifted those resources to for your deputies?
That's right.
Do you know roughly how many more of that put on the road?
I don't know, I can use two numbers.
That's, you know, the whole thing, I mean, I get the whole thing, it comes down to the enforcement part of it, and that's a challenge. I mean, you guys are, that's a tough situation to be put in, and just to be able to manage this whole thing and being able to understand who's exempt, who's not exempt, and a lot of moving parts. So, to Joey's point, getting it pretty solidified is probably a good thing for us to be able to make it where you can communicate that well with our officers. Thank you.
Somebody called me today and said, well, and they was talking about the sheriff's office and all different things, and said, well, do you think maybe he could call on some retired officers and see if they would help? And then he also mentioned volunteers and that they would have sovereign immunity, and I said, well, good luck on that because they sue us individually. So, I just wondered if you had thought, I hadn't thought anything like that, to try to get other people to help. It may not be a good suggestion, I don't know.
Well, Chairman, we do have a reserve program, and we've had one for a while. A lot of people, we equate it to kind of the citizens' patrol or things like that. However, these are certified police officers. Participation is somewhat, it's hard to hire a cop nowadays, let alone you want to come volunteer for it. But we do have some volunteers that, we've had some people show interest. We have to be careful about putting a citizen out in a position that's, one, potentially dangerous to, two, that potentially would cost us, you know, who knows what?
I know, I know. I just don't go throw that there like hell.
We don't turn, we don't hang them on, we have discussions with them, and in a fixed position that we can use, we certainly try.
I had the same question Chris had, but also didn't the Governor's order yesterday say something about deputizing?
I can stop you for just a minute, everybody speaking of the mind so everybody on Facebook can hear you.
The Governor's order said something about deputizing, he's going to give the law, the sheriffs in place of chiefs in the state?
Or his order, he did. And that's exactly what he said. That's my point, is that if his order is going to, I believe, is going to preempt a lot of what's in this ordinance, we just don't have it yet. But he did say that.
And also, I guess we could reach out, we could also reach out through Homeland Security probably for military personnel, because they're already doing that statewide now for policing or trying to help, not enforcement, we're just trying to, you know, crowds, have a party or something and...
The Governor can do that.
Yeah, the Governor, I think he had that in his, but we can request it to Homeland Security. I think that's where that request was going to come from.
And I don't, just, it's fine point, I was saying as a group of commissioners, I don't know that we have that authority, I know the Governor does.
And I hope we, you know, we're not a military stakeout. I hope we never, ever get to that point that we have to, you know, go to those levels.
Just get more people on the ground. Educating them. More educating them in all, we just like, I think that when they did, Athens Park County was the first one, I think it did that shelter in place, he said, we're not out there to get tickets or locking anybody up, we're there to tell them, and the reason why, you know, they need to be in place and off the streets, and, you know, he said, we're not there to write tickets.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
And I think that's a big question, is we don't know what the executive order will be, and I think we don't know, but based upon what being presented tonight, that's where, since it is a county ordinance violation, that's where we can use the other help.
I think we were trying to take a very surgical approach and being very specific on, to Dr. Anderson's point, some of these businesses that are have a higher risk of cross-contamination and not, I got a feeling the government one might be more broad compared to what we're addressing tonight, so, yeah, I think we just need to look and see, and then, you know, resource-wise, if there's something that pops up that you need, you know, in order to help facilitate, do your role and be a part of the conversation.
I'm sure our code enforcement is down here today, and I think probably we're having it on weekends.
Yes.
Living with us.
Jeff, do you work real closely with defects? You know, I was worried, you know, you talking about the children, see that just, I just can't, that's just so awful.
Well, you're right, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, I think the Governor touched on him last night, so...
I mean, I know that, I mean, you get on each other's nerves, I get on my own nerves.
But yours and ours referrals come through the school system.
I always say now that, that's it.
So, he was exactly right in stating.
That's right.
So, yeah, although your domestic may go up, although some of your, not necessarily domestic related violence, but your domestic issues go up, we may be seeing, it's early yet, we may be seeing the decline in our reports of child molestation and different things like that, which is not necessarily a good thing, because it may be a factor that just not been reported.
When somebody says domestic violence, what, does that include child abuse or neglect? Or is that just a husband in life or whatever?
Neglect, not so much, but it could very well be a child abuse.
Okay.
Family members who live living inside a household.
And you are able to re-put the, and I don't know where we're at on the court, the courts, I know some of them are working, some of them are not working, and we, is all the courts shut down at this point?
I don't know.
I would defer that to...
They're not doing any, I know they're not doing any criminal trials or anything right now, I think they are going to call a calendar, I think it is one day next week, I believe it is. And I know magistrate, they're not seeing the public, they're taking in any information that comes in via mail or email. They are still doing warrants with his deputies' video, they're not face-to-face, they're also doing daily hearings so that people can get out of the jail, because we don't want a jail for the people that are eligible to be on the street, because we don't want the COVID-19 in our jail. And so, they're doing them daily based on the order that they have received from the Superior Court Judge, who got that order from the Supreme, Georgia Court, if I understand that correctly. And so, no, they're not, they're not doing business as usual level. But your guys are in here, now that they don't have a role in the courthouse, you're able to keep them working in some other capacity.
Oh, absolutely, right, right. We have to keep some of here, but other ones are outside.
Got you, good. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All right, would like to move that 6:00, that's okay with the Governor?
Yes.
For more discussion. Hopefully, we'll hear from the Governor.
Does he have a time when, is there a time?
We haven't got...
Just today.
I just checked, it's still up here.
Yeah, we all just checked. All right, so next up we have county manager for today.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner, Mr. Fosse, to your point also, as far as the volunteer services, if the public will go to our website, we do have a, we have put a site in there where you can fill out an application for any professional services such as nursing or any of that type of thing. So, therefore, we do get a situation where we need to have volunteers, they have an application process, and we have their qualifications, and also the floor set that course as well. So, just to that point. And as Joey noted, we've already talked about, is we continue to monitor the COVID-19 situation, and will of course follow the Governor's orders, which we've all talked about, and as you mentioned, we haven't seen that yet, what that will be, but as soon as it comes out, I'll be forwarding that to you as well. Departments continue to go above and beyond, I mean, we're so proud of every department that we have. The courthouse itself has been followed, it's clean on a regular basis, a daily basis, sometimes two or three times a day. So, Jake Tarr and his crew have just been phenomenal in getting not only this facility but other facilities as well, and keeping them maintained, and hand cleaners, sanitizer, and those types of things. Also, I'd like to especially thank our IT department for its work during this situation is they have set up remote access to allow employees to access the county network and their PCs from outside their physical offices. It also has rerouted inbound phone calls to cell phones or chain voicemails for departments when necessary, additionally, there's video conferencing for several departments. Some of the departments are such that they can't work from home, they're on a rotation basis, this keeps the separation in the office, keeps the amount of employees down a little bit, so they've been tremendous in getting that work done, so thanks to the IT. The county website has a great new resource with its citizens, can sign up for the automatically emergency notifications, and what that is, is in other words, whenever the COVID-19 portion of the website is updated, and it's being updated quite a bit these days, citizens sign up for these notifications, will receive an email notifying them of the most recent update. So, that's another addition that we added. As part of our COVID-19 outreach, we've also worked alongside our local pharmacies to implement a prescription delivery program. Dawson County EMS Services and Dawson County Parks and Recreation Staff will pick up and deliver prescriptions to Dawson County residents. This allows residents of Dawson County that are classified as high-risk by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention in relation to COVID-19 to remain secure and safe at home, yet still get their medications. It also allows our staff to witness any potential or existing health issues going on to some of those citizens as well. Our Park and Recreation, of course, has canceled spring sports and monitors the outside park areas to ensure groups do not assemble. All camping areas such as War Hill Park has been closed, they are frozen. Those, usually those applications go for two weeks. There are no new applications being taken in, but the existing ones that are there, as soon as they leave, there's nobody else to go in there again. So, that's been done. Our playground areas have been closed down. So, mostly what you can do is walk, and that's being monitored closely by the staff as well. The Margino Weaver Senior Center and all activities are closed through April 30th, beginning this week. The center began delivering frozen meals to senior clients. This gives clients five meals a week with additional meals on the weekends for those in need. These meals are delivered on Mondays, on Thursdays. The senior center is taking an extra bag with snacks and staple foods for clients to have when needed. The center is serving more than 130 clients, and the other days of the week, the senior center staff members are making phone calls to all clients to check and see if they are in need of anything and making deliveries when needed. And I can tell you, the seniors are very much missing the staff.
Okay, did you say? You said the activity is closed until April what?
April 30th.
April 30th.
Yes, ma'am. And this is good news, our finance department continues to just excel. Recently, they received notice that the county's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended in 2018 qualifies them for the Government Finance Officers Association Certification of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This certificate, as I know, you've heard me say in years past, is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting. Again, they've received that. HR Director Brad Gold has completed the Human Resources, an online course for government officials. The course was completed through the UGA Carvison Institute of Government and consistent of six modules with quizzes and final exam. It gives students a solid understanding of the basic HR and legal issues related to government employment. So, kudos to Brad for that. The planning department continues to be in high demand, even with the moratoriums on. Joe Anderson's Motorcycle Endurance Event was to be held on April 26th, and it has been postponed with no rescheduled date at this time. This is the annual reoccurring special event located on Rory Road for that motorcycle. And I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions of the county manager? Questions to the county manager?
Not questions, but just to, I said at last meeting, thank y'all for all the extra work that's been put in and extra hours and put in. And I failed to mention Laura last time, and I know she's been working hard. You know, I think I told her the other day, back when we voted on her, the chairman wanted to get a public relations person out, I wasn't really necessarily fond of spending the money on it, but it was money well spent. And times like this is a time that is very evident that you need somebody that's able to communicate with the community and come up with different forms and different avenues of communication. And so thank y'all for getting that down. You're wanting to get her on board and getting her on board, so thank you.
Other questions for the county manager?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Do you have a county attorney report?
Nothing to report.
We don't have anything for executive session?
No, sir.
All right. With that being said, we are adjourned until six o'clock. Thank you for your attendance.